...tonight because he's recovering from shoulder surgery and doing quite well. Mayor Pro-Tim Seneca?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebenow?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Manager Cyril?
Here.
Attorney Zeminek?
Here.
Economic Development Director Kimball?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief King?
Here.
Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weis?
Here.
Village Engineer Nicole?
Here.
Director of Fire Prevention Daniels?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Connolly?
Here.
Human Resource Administrator Casey?
Here.
Director of Emergency Medical Services Drouly?
Here.
Deputy Director of Emergency Management Services Jenkins?
Here.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I wonder if we could maybe close the door and limit the audio feedback in the room? Thank you. Okay, first up, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held February 11th, 2010, and board meeting held February 16th, 2010, and minutes of the special meeting for stormwater draft report held on January 25th, 2010, and I should mention that the February 16th minutes would be as corrected. Motion to approve, Emory?
Second, Scott.
Thank you. Roll call? Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca? Present. Okay, under reports, under Mayor, I just wanted to mention that Bob and I went to see Mayor Ron today, and he is quickly on the mend. He was up and around, walking around, doing some physical therapy for the shoulder, moving his arm, so he's doing very, very well and sends his regards to everyone, of course. I also wanted to just quickly mention to the fellow board members, District 201 had invited us all to a forum tomorrow, March 2nd, with author Robert Renteria, who will be talking about running with gangs, dropping out of school, et cetera, et cetera, and Assistant Principal Nancy Bartosz had asked us to respond to her only if we weren't coming, so I kind of wanted to remind everyone of that. It's at 3:00 tomorrow at the high school. So if you have any questions, I have the original letter here, and we can go with that later. Also under Mayor, and this is something that's very near and dear to Mayor Ron's heart, so I know he's sad that he can't be here for this, two very important things tonight. We're going to have a presentation of village service awards and presentation of firefighter of the year award. So first, we'll do village service awards, and I think Ron Cyril is going to assist with that, correct?
Yes. And then Kathy Casey, our Human Resource Administrator?
Just for the benefit of the public, this is something that we have not done before, not in this venue. We have historically recognized the service of both our commission and board members, as well as our employees, on an annual basis, but due to budget cuts, we decided that this year we would do it in this forum and this setting. So I'm real happy to see a really good turnout, because we weren't sure how this was going to work out the first year. The other thing that really struck me about this is I've got a list of 31 individuals here, and we're going to call off their names in a minute, but when you look down at the years of service, and this only recognizes the years of service for some of the board and commission members for the specific commissions that they were on, but you total that up, and if we all agree that as we get older, we get wiser, we've got over 445 years of combined wisdom that we're going to recognize this evening, and that's a lot of years. So with that, I'd like to start with the five-year service pins, and as I call your name off, if you'd come forward, we're going to give you the pin, and we're going to be taking pictures. There you are. You wore black. I couldn't see you. All right. I don't know how you want them to...
We're a line-up.
Okay. All right, the first person we have to recognize is Joe Herncerek, who's being recognized for five years of service on the Fire and Police Commission. I know for a fact, from my own personal knowledge, that he's been very active in the village and many other venues for many years, so this is just for his Fire and Police Commission service. We also have, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Stan Anton and Greg Pill.
Congratulations.
And then from the Police Pension Board, we have Paul Bartousch and Tom Conidi. Conidi, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing the names correctly. And then, from our Emergency Management Association, we have Rosemary Schmelzer, who is a volunteer, and Lawrence St. Lucy. And rounding out the five years of service recognition from the Police Department, we have Officer Jeff Bogart. Okay, Glenn, you're going to do this, and then we'll do the next group?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the next set is for 10 years of service. We have, from our Economic Development Department, Mike Johnson. And then we have several, actually several, board members, and again, this is just recognition for service in the specific positions that they've served on the board. We have the mayor, who's not here, obviously, tonight. He's been 10 years as mayor. We have trustee Pat Klebenow, and we have trustee Seneca. I know she didn't want me to mention her name, but... And then, in the Fire Department, we have Dave Lincoln, and we also have Mark Skoronsky. Did I get it right? I did practice once.
You know, with all these firefighters here, maybe we should call home and make sure we didn't leave the iron plus...
Good idea. In the Police Department, we have Scott Bukovich and Scott Opel.
Okay, now I'm going to have to read the name tags. Ah, Bukovich, that's you. Congratulations and thank you. Congratulations, thank you.
Oh, great. One, two, three. And one more? One, two, three.
The next set is the 15 years of service, and I know this first individual, I don't expect him to be here because he went home sick this evening, but Steve Penzac...
We had to send him home sick.
Yeah, we had to send him home, so I'm hoping he's not here. And then, from the Fire Department, we have Lynn Drouly, our EMS director. We have Arnie Nolan and Dan Sullivan. And the next, from the Police Department, we have Mike Dale. Sorry, Mike Dale. And from Public Works, we have Frank Coles Jr. That is the complete 15-year group.
One more.
Now, for the next several sets of groups of years, starting with 20 years of service and on up, we also give the employee or the board or commission member a plaque, so we have that as well. From our Economic Development Department, for 20 years of service, we have Kim Nicole. From the Fire Department, we have Lieutenant Jim Halleck. From the Police Department, we have telecommunicator Kelly Shilgan.
She's a family commitment.
And then rounding out the 20-year group, we have Kirk Nix from the Public Works Department. He's not here.
So we'll just take my...
You and Kim.
You and Kim.
You and Kim.
You have Kim.
One, two, three. One more.
Next, we have the 30-year plaque presentations, and from the Fire Department, we have Doug Daniels, our Fire Prevention Bureau Director. We also have firefighter Tom Barrett. And we have firefighter Robbie Sepeck. And rounding out the group of 30-year recipients, we have, from the Public Works Department, Larry Fossey. And the final plaque presentation that we have is for our Fire Chief Frank Trout, 40 years of service.
I thought I needed a wheelchair somewhere.
Plowing a male's ambulance.
One, two, three. One more.
Now, that concludes the portion of our presentations for service, and I'd like to thank all the employees. You know, we have a wonderful group of employees, and obviously with a lot of experience, and they serve this community well, and I'd like to say thank you. And I know the board, the purpose of this presentation is for the board to say thank you to you as well. Now, we do have one other sort of service-related presentation, and at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Randy King. We had a recent retirement of a police officer, Paul Bartousch, and he wants to talk about that.
As you know, it's Paul Bartousch who has also, for a five-year ward for commission, he's still on the pension board, so he's still sort of in the community. What we want to do is just take a moment to thank Officer Paul Bartousch for his years of service at the Police Department. So on behalf of Chief Mulhern in Westmont Police Department, I'd like to take time to honor recently retired police officer Paul Bartousch. Officer Bartousch had over 28 years of service in the Westmont Police Department. Officer Bartousch was hired on November 11th, 1981, as a probationary police officer, promoted to officer on November 30th, 1982, and retired this past January 17th. Officer Bartousch attended Chicago Police Department Academy for his basic training. His father was a Chicago police officer, a lot of people didn't know that. Officer Bartousch was the department's second K-9 officer, and he held this position for a number of years. Officer Bartousch was a senior patrolman, served in the capacity of officer in charge on many occasions. Officer Bartousch also served in assignments as a member of the West team, which was Westmont's own SWAT team many years ago, before we went to Fiat, which is a multi-jurisdictional team. He served as a member of our color guard for a period of time. Officer Bartousch received several chief's recognition commendations, felony arrest commendations, and numerous letters of commendation and thank you letters for assisting people in need, as well as other police agencies, especially when he was with the K-9 unit. On behalf of Chief Mulhern in the Westmont Police Department, I wish Paul Bartousch the best in his new assignment as a retired Westmont Police Officer. Thank you, Paul.
Just at this point, then, we have the next presentation from the Fire Department.
Yes. Our Chief Trout, 40 years in one day.
Actually, April 15th will be 41 years.
Wow, wonderful. Another plaque.
The board, really. Thank you for you all being here tonight. We had kind of like almost a dress rehearsal last week. I take full responsibility, but tonight, we have Rob Sepeck, firefighter first class, who was nominated and was voted upon by our Fire Department personnel, our award committee. It was reviewed this last year, along with other members who were nominated, for the firefighter of the year position. And so Rob has been with the Fire Department, joining us in January of 1979, as a volunteer paid-on qual firefighter. Over the years, Rob's dedication and enthusiasm for the profession has earned him the respect and admiration of his peers and supervisors. He is currently certified State of Illinois Fire Marshal Office firefighter III, which is the highest level of firefighting classification for that position. He also achieved fire apparatus engineer certification, emergency medical technician status, and the fire officer one certification. Rob is an outstanding young man. He's married, has a son, Rob Jr. He holds down a full-time position with Mars Incorporated. He is a individual who will, as a part-time, paid-on qual firefighter with us, will work his full-time job, sometimes all night long, be called back for our callback program here at Westmont, always willing to give more. He was noted by our department for his enthusiasm, his dedication to the department, to the village. You ask Rob to do any type of work, Rob will always step forward as a volunteer and make sure it gets done. Mostly what Rob does is a lot of our work with our radios and our paging systems and our technical equipment that we have, and we really appreciate the many years of service which he gave to the department. Over the years, he's received countless letters of commendation for his actions, line of duty. Something has to be noted also that he's been donating blood and pellets at the Hinsdale Hospital every three weeks since 1976. His sister was diagnosed with leukemia at that time. She has passed away, but Rob continues to carry forward with that worthwhile endeavor, never missing, never missing a week. He's been noted by Hinsdale Hospital. He has received accolades for that, and at this time, I'd like to bring forth firefighter first class, Rob Sepeck. Nothing's ever perfect, is it? Here we go. It's red, it's a red ribbon to match the blood that may be drawn. Mayor Pro-Tim?
Westmont Fire Department, ISO 2, which is quite pronounced.
Exceptional Service Award. This certificate is awarded to firefighter Robert Sepeck. The Westmont Fire Department recognizes the designation of 2009 firefighter of the year, awarded the 16th day of February, or March 1st, 2010, and it's signed by our mayor
I would like to thank everyone that nominated me for this position. My mom and dad always told me to do the best you can, and you make the best of your life. And I'd also like to thank the department and their membership for giving me such a great award. And I'd also like to thank my wife, Renee, and my son Bobby for, you know, when I leave to go to the firehouse to get some little job done, that they accept that, understand what I'm trying to do with work, just to help the village out.
Thank you, Bobby.
That was very, very good. And just on behalf of Mayor Ron, thank you to everyone for all of their service to our community. I know it's very important to him. Clerk?
I just want to ask the residents to be sure and check their message box on their water bills, because we are putting important messages in there. The one coming this month is the census, of course, and secondly, we cannot take post-dated checks anymore. The bank will not take them from us, and we can't sit around and hold them, so please make sure when you send a check, it's the right date on it. All those messages are in there, and they are important. He's reading.
Thank you. People will just pause here for a brief moment.
Good idea.
Sit under the chair.
Did the entire agenda for the...
It's like a handkerchief. Oh, okay. That's important.
I don't think so.
I kind of felt protected without him here.
Okay, moving on. Did the clerk have anything else?
No, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Attorney?
Nothing, thanks.
Nothing? Okay. Manager Cyril?
I just wanted to point out that we have another committee meeting following this regular board meeting. We have the Code Enforcement Committee meeting immediately following the Village Board meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, item two, 128 South Cass Avenue. Board to consider ordinances approving the following. A, special use permit request to operate a ground floor barber shop in the B1 Limited Business District; and B, development permit request to operate a barber shop in the B1 Limited Business District. Can we take those together, or do they have...
No, separately, please.
Separately? Motion to approve paragraph A, Emory?
Second, Scott.
Thank you. Roll call? Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow? I mean, trustee Seneca, I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you. Motion to approve paragraph...
I'm sorry, one comment on that is that, since the applicant's here, the ordinance is written so that if a third chair is added, and this was in the staff write-up, it may affect the parking, it may necessitate a parking variance, so if you add a third chair, check with Village Economic Development Department first, and we can talk about the parking requirements. Thanks.
Thank you. Motion for B? Motion to approve paragraph B?
Second, Scott.
Thank you. Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
222 North Cass Avenue Lux Showrooms. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development permit request to operate a furniture and fixture showroom in the B1 Limited Business District. Any discussion on this one? Motion to approve, Emory?
Second, Forsley?
Great. Want to vote? Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Ground storage tank painting contract award. Board to consider an ordinance awarding the bid from and authorizing a construction contract with ERA Valdivia Contractors Incorporated for the recoding of both east and west brown storage water reservoirs.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Fleming.
Any discussion on this one? Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
2009 International Energy Conservation Code, IECC. Board to consider an ordinance adopting the 2009 IECC. Motion to approve, Emory?
Second, Forsley?
Any discussion? Roll call? Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Automated Traffic Law Enforcement System. Board to consider a motion authorizing the continued use of the Automated Traffic Law Enforcement System, red light auto, red light photo enforcement, with a subsequent review of said system in six months. Motion to approve, Emory?
Second, Scott.
Any discussion on that? I would just like to say thank you to Ellen for her comments on Thursday night, and hopefully they're being communicated to Springfield as we hold this meeting. Thank you. Hope so. Thank you. Roll call? Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Seven, waiver of residency requirement for a telecommunicator. Board to consider an ordinance waiving the residency requirement for a full-time telecommunicator is outlined in the Telecommunicators Collective Bargaining Agreement. So move to Emory?
Second, Forsley?
Discussion, Ron? Is someone going to comment on this?
Just that, as we discussed on Thursday, that this is a specific request from a specific telecommunicator, and, you know, the bargaining agreement provides the provision for the board to make this exception.
Thank you.
Could I ask, is this going to affect any future telecommunications at this point?
Only to the extent that you might get another request under the same provision, and that you would consider the specific circumstances of that request and make a decision.
So any new telecommunications would have to come and request it personally?
Yes. Doesn't change anything, I mean, the language is in the bargaining agreement as it is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Roll call? Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Thank you. Number eight, 2010 zoning map. Board to consider an ordinance approving the revised official map of the Village of Westmont.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Emery. Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Number nine, DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference Legislative Action Program. Board to consider a resolution that will endorse the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference 2010 Legislative Action Program. So moved, Emery.
Second, Forsley.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Ten, reduction of the number of available taxi licenses. Board to consider an ordinance reducing the number of available taxi licenses by one due to the non-renewal of the 2010 license by AIM X Livery, 1105 East Roosevelt Road, Lombard, Illinois.
Go ahead.
So moved, Emery.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Eleven, Comcast Settlement. Board to consider an ordinance approving a settlement agreement with Comcast of Illinois V I L L C regarding payment of the village pursuant to the village's utility audit. So moved, Emery.
Second, Forsley.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Twelve, hiring freeze. Board to consider a motion lifting the hiring freeze for the purpose of hiring up to three part-time telecommunicators on an as-needed temporary basis. Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that this is budget neutral. We have the monies in the budget for this. We are looking to address some changes in our workforce. We recently had some notification from one of the telecommunicators that may cause that telecommunicator to temporarily be unavailable, and in the collective bargaining agreement that we have, it allows up to 1,000 hours of part-time telecommunicator services, and we're just going to be following that specific guideline.
So we're not adding to headcount, we're simply using this to cover any absences?
Correct.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
miscellaneous, Finance Ordinance 21.
We have before us on this first day of March, 2010, a finance ordinance in the amount of
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Emery. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
First set of purchase orders.
Motion to approve is a block for $309,026.66 by Forsley.
Second, Emery. Roll call.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Second set of purchase orders.
Motion to approve is a block for $242,705.55 by Forsley.
Second, Emery. Discussion?
Just that this is, this was in the budget, this is part of our replacement vehicle programming, and something we need to keep looking at and doing to maintain our service that we have in the community.
And I just wanted to point out, trustee Klebinau would ask for some additional information regarding the history of purchases for public works vehicles, and they didn't pass that information out to you.
Yeah.
So you can see where, what vehicles are being specifically replaced by these purchases, and you also see a kind of historical perspective of the last four years.
I appreciate you having it broken out like this, and it would probably help in future purchases too, to see what's actually being rotated and miles and everything.
Sure.
I think it's important for the public. On the other hand, I'm still, again, spending this much at this time with our budget as tight as it is, so, I mean, I would have felt better to vehicles and slowly purchase them in there, but I do appreciate it, and for the public to know that they are all up in the 1990s, and mileage anywhere from 54,000 up to over, he might switch out to the 104 one, he might switch one of these vehicles around and get rid of an older model yet, so.
Should probably also point out that, you know, several years ago, we created a special fund and developed a program to keep up with replacing our vehicles on as-needed basis. We've fallen behind, and the financing mechanism, we actually have financing in place for this, so we have that financing already, and that's why it doesn't really impact the budget, because the money is available through that financing mechanism at this point in time.
I still believe in spending money if you can save a little here and there, but I do appreciate the breakout, and it definitely helps, and I'd like to see if we can continue with this, especially if we get approached by the public. I think it's going to be important for them to see it too. Thank you very much.
All the other thing, going with the purchase order situation here, I took on this venue in my second term, along with previous trustee Steve Fadesco. We asked a simple question, what the age of the fleet was within our Public Works Department. Prior to this time, prior to even having a vehicle replacement program, it was kind of like whoever squeaked the most got the oil and got the new equipment. The average age of your equipment in your Public Works Department, ladies and gentlemen, so everyone knows out there, was approximately 14 and a half years old. Now, what that equates to is wear and tear on city streets, and on that type of equipment, it beats them to pieces, and I want to commend our Public Works Department, all the equipment looks pristine and clean all the time, even during those years, but I can guarantee you, if we had not come up with some kind of a program to replace this equipment, all this nice snow removal and stuff that we do real well in this village, we would have had some major problems with that, because actually, in that particular time, there was one evening, if I remember correctly, two went down, and we had to call a mechanic out to do some quick repairs. So the vehicle replacement program is something that's in play, to see to it that the services in your village, not only from a standpoint of your public works vehicles, but your police vehicles, your fire equipment, all of the things that we need to give the services to the residents of this village on an ongoing basis, to see to it that, you know, they take off out of the garage or whatever and it breaks down, it's not going to do any good to anybody. And at one time, I think we had a backhoe that was about 30 years old, that every time they went out, hydraulic hose was breaking on it. So, I mean, I guess, I guess there are those out there that'll go, why are you spending money on vehicles and equipment? Well, the other question is, well, if the water mains break, how do we fix them, ladies and gentlemen? How do we get there? So...
One other thing I should mention too, is we're working our way through the preliminary budget process, one of the things that came back from the public works area, in particular in the vehicle maintenance area, is that one of the reasons we've been able to keep our costs down this year in this particular area is because we have improved the average age of our fleet, and the maintenance costs have gone down. And what I've asked the Public Works Director to do with the Finance Department is try to put together some hard numbers that you can look at during the budget process. So that's the feedback we're getting from the people that are servicing the equipment, so we see that value.
Yeah, we had briefly talked about that at Public Works, asking the mechanics about the number of man-hours they were having to expend on equipment now versus what they were having to expend, say, four or five years ago, but I just, I feel it's a very important program from all aspects, and we need to continue looking at it going forward.
Anything else? Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
No.
We do not have any requests for executive session this evening, so with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Thank you. We're done.